I'm going to call the Board of Alderman meeting to order for the city of Warrenton for November 20th, 2012. We usually start off our meetings with a pledge of allegiance, so I'll ask everyone stand. Alderman Cornell will lead us to the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is approval of the regular session minutes from November 6th, 2012. Any corrections or additions? Our concerns.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular session minutes from November 6th, 2012.
Second? Motion made by Alderman Kendall, seconded by Alderman Clark to approve the regular session minutes from November 6th, 2012. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Item four on the agenda is hearing from the public. We usually afford people, any audience, five minutes of time to address the board. We ask that you remain within that five minutes and your remarks be kind and civil. If anybody would like to address the board at this time, please come forward. Would you come forward and give us your name?
John Miller. And I won't take five minutes, and I'll be as kind as I can. That's what we like to do. Good evening. I'm here this evening to discuss the employment contracts awarded to the chief of police and the city finance officer during the same time that the citizens were electing a new mayor last year. While I'm not suggesting any dissatisfaction whatsoever are the removal of anyone employed by the city of Warrenton, I am concerned about all the city employees being treated equal. I speak not only for myself, but there's many concerned citizens throughout the community that I've been talking to for the last eight or nine months. I meant to get here earlier in the year, but it says, like anyone else, I get busy. But in any event, as the year's growing, where it's almost over, it's almost Christmas already, and I understand that apparently, reading through the contract, I'm not an attorney by any means, but with that being said, at this time, I would respectfully ask, for the record, that each individual board member, if they would support and pass an ordinance to terminate or not renew the mentioned contracts. Again, no one is asking to terminate any city employees, just the current contracts. At this time, I'd like to ask Alderman Clark. I know when you, apparently you did not support this contract as you're, do you feel the same way at this point?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Tallo?
What are you asking me?
Well, if you supported the contract, so you still feel the same way today?
Yes.
Well, Mr. Cornell, you didn't get a vote last year.
I did not get a vote.
But if there was, would you support an ordinance?
Let me be clear. I believe I've discussed it with nearly every member that was here voted. I am not in favor of those contracts, and that discussion was with Ms. Thorne. My issue at this point is, it's water under the bridge. If comes a point where it appears that there's a way for that contract not to be renewed, my understanding is it automatically renews, then that'll be a discussion for the board. So I guess my concern is that I don't think that necessarily it was a good policy for the city to offer those, but even more damaging right now is to continue the conversation about it. If at a point it comes up to where we can do something different, I would certainly hope, and I've expressed this to Ms. Thorne, I would hope that every city employee would feel that they were safe in their job without the need of an employment agreement. And that would be my hope, is that employees feel that way.
Well, I feel the same way about the water under the bridge part. I certainly hate to bring up old, but in the same respect of reading through the contract, it's just what you stated. It automatically renewals, and there is an attorney president, he can correct me if I'm wrong. The research I've done is the only way that can be rescinded is, but with an ordinance. And that's why I'm here this evening, to see if you all would be in support of that. And that was my question, and you pretty much answered, and I thank you.
Sir?
Alderman Flake?
I support the contracts.
You voted against it?
I support the contracts.
Okay. Again, you weren't here last year, but how would you feel about it? Alderman Dreyer?
I really don't know anything about it. I never.
Never researched it?
Never looked into it.
I have, when you asked me the question, I understood if I felt the same way about the contract when we did it. Is that correct?
Yes, and I understood.
You changed the questions as you went down the line, if you would support a ordinance. And I'd have to agree with Alderman Cornell with his statements on that. So I just want to make it clear, you know, I stand by my vote at that time, but I was a minority of the vote.
Yes.
And I've always had a policy to stick with the majority and work with them. As a group, we've worked very well over the years, I feel.
And I commend you all for that. This is not about this, it's about a contract that's given to only two people, it's unfair for the rest of the employees, and the bottom line to a contract is, this particular contract, and I don't want to blame her, I'm probably going to be over my five minutes, is that it's never ending. It's automatic renewal.
Mr. Miller, your time is...
Well, thank you very much, and have a happy Thanksgiving.
I've got just a quick question. Mr. Miller, you are a city resident?
Yes, ma'am.
Where do you reside?
14 Isaac Kent.
So you're in Ward 1?
Yes.
Three, three.
I'm sorry.
Okay, just curious.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks for coming in.
Again, thanks. Have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
You too, John.
Interesting comments, and I might just add to those. In my short term, seven months here in the mayor's position, I probably feel that question more than any other issue with the city. What are you going to do with those contracts? I think it's a thing that's going to keep haunting us, and it's not going to go away. At some point in time, either this board or a future board will have to sit down, have some work sessions, and address those concerns.
I'm going to move on to the mayor's report. Boy, the mayor doesn't have much of a report. Oh, wait a minute. Forgot, skipped the Board of Alderman. All right, I'm backing up. It's a good thing I've got Bill and John on each side. Do we have anything from the Board of Alderman? Anybody have anything you want to share with the public?
I do briefly.
Good.
I know everybody rolls their eyes when I say briefly, but I did have an opportunity this week to attend one of two successful fundraisers in the community for a local teacher that was severely injured in an accident. One of them was a fundraising dinner at Applebee's, another one was a pancake breakfast at the school. And my only comment is, it's a reminder of how nice it is to live in a small community, to see the community outpouring and the turnout to support one of our residents that's in need. So, just like you said, it's good to be reminded of that, what we're a part of.
Anybody else?
Well, I'd just like to wish all the people connected with the city organization, as well as all the residents of the city, to have a safe and happy Thanksgiving.
Likewise. Anybody else?
Ken?
Now, I'm going to move on to the mayor's report. Just a couple brief things here. One thing I might mention, in our pack of materials, I don't know whether Jack was going to mention that there's no planning and zoning meeting for December?
That's correct.
Is it fair that I can announce to the public?
Yes, sir.
That meeting's been canceled, that we have nothing on the order agenda at that time. The other thing I might mention to the public is the recreational director process. The Personnel Committee has called three candidates back in for second interviews. I think they feel that these are the top three candidates. One of them was interviewed yesterday. I think the other two are going to be interviewed tomorrow, eight and 10. I think they've got some excellent candidates to choose from. I think by the end of the week, early next week, they will probably have a recommendation to select a finalist, and we should know at the next board meeting who that person's going to be, and we'll go from there. The other thing was the January 1 meeting coming up. I kind of took a quick poll of the board. Three of them want to cancel the meeting for January 1, the other three want to move it to January 2. So since we haven't reached a consensus on that, I think we'll just sit tight and see what comes up on our agenda for the month of December. If it looks like we do have several things, then we'll probably have that on the second. Otherwise, we'll make a decision to cancel it if there's not enough on there. So we're going to leave that and table that for the time being. One more thing, and I look at this next item on the agenda, is an appointment situation. I want to mention to the public and to the board, I'm having trouble filling an appointment on the planning and zoning board that I have a resignation, and I've been, actually I've had it for over a month now, been looking, and that's a very important board for the city. Those people do a good job. There are eyes and ears for zoning process. If you know of a citizen that resides within the city of Warrenton that might have an interest in that, or any board member knows a citizen, I appreciate knowing about it and contacting them and see if we can get them on the planning and zoning board. They do a lot of work. They meet pretty regularly, and we're hoping they're going to do more work as the new year comes about, too. So if you know of someone, I'd certainly be interested in that, too. Next item is, actually, next meeting, I have a whole list of appointees for the various boards within the city. Some of them are renewals, and their term is up, and we would like to reappoint them. Some of them are new people, new faces, but one board, the IDA board, they've had a resignation and a vacancy, and I'd really not like that one to go until December. I'd like to make an appointment tonight on that. You all probably know this, these are non-paying jobs. People are not standing in line to donate their time and service to the city, so it becomes difficult sometimes to find someone that wants to donate their time. I've talked to Mr. Kent Hicks. Mr. Hicks is a longtime realtor within the city of Warrenton. I'm going to say 40 years, Kent. Is that a fair statement? Mr. Hicks was also on the first IDA board for the county of Warren. I can't tell you what year, back in their 80s.
1981.
1981. Was also president of that board. That was long before the city had their own IDA board. So I think he brings a lot of expertise to that board, a wealth of knowledge, and my recommendation is, I would like to appoint him to the IDA board, so. If no one has any concerns, I would entertain a motion to that effect. So move. Is there a second? Not hearing a second, that motion is failed, so there would be no appointment without a vote from the board. If the board has a person that you know, that you, I would entertain that person. It's not easy to find them, so if that's the direction we're going to go...
You know, I will second that motion. That's your appointment, and let's go ahead and have a go and vote on it.
Okay. I feel more comfortable doing that. All right. I do have a motion by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Cornell, to appoint Mr. Hicks to the IDA board. I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Flake?
No.
Alderman Cornell?
No.
Alderman Tallo?
No.
Alderman Kendall?
No.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
No.
Motion failed, five to one. Next item on the agenda is the operational, I'm sorry, Director of Operations Finance Officer, Terry Clark.
I do have an operational update for you this evening. Jim Daly, our building commissioner, has received his electrical residential certification, so want to let you all know that and congratulate him on receiving that additional certification.
Congratulations.
Thank you. The only other item I have for you is the insurance renewals. First, we have the property and liability insurance renewal, and I think we've got someone here from Tri-County. If you should have questions, on the back of the renewal notice with the premium, it's actually a little summary that we put together showing where the changes in our policy are occurring. Biggest amount of increase in premium is in automobile coverage. We took off several older vehicles that only had liability and replaced them with new vehicles that have full coverage insurance, so thus, that change. Also had the addition of some pieces of equipment, which is in the inland marine category, which honestly, I've never understood why it's called inland marine, but whatever, it's equipment. And then also, an additional premium under general liability, we've had a number of liability-type claims, falls, slips, that sort of thing, that were included in this year's renewal consideration. So overall, the percentage of increase is 4.9% for a total new premium of $139,295 for the property and liability insurance policy renewal.
So the insurance company that's providing this is Missouri Rural Services Property and Liability Company?
That's correct.
Okay. And the broker is Tri-County?
That's correct.
Okay. Is there someone from Tri-County that wants to address this, or...
Yes. If you should have any questions, I'm sure she'd be happy to answer it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm here to answer any questions. The only thing that I would also say is, on the general liability side, it's exposure-driven as well, so some of your expenses change, and as they do, the premium changes along with it. So as expenses...
Ma'am, can you come? John can't hear you.
I'm so sorry.
No, you're fine.
I'm used to shouting it out.
Got a little sign back there, he can't, he can't hear you. Your voice won't come over on the program. Thank you.
Well, my question was, a couple of the bigger changes, is it due to the city's experience, due to some of our collision coverages, or due to some of our liability claims? Is that why we're jumping up?
No, actually, I'm finding that a lot of the increase, like Terry had indicated, is there were some autos that did come off, but they were older ones that had liability only. They did not have full coverage on them, where they had the comp and the collision. And then it was replaced by some newer vehicles that do have the physical damage associated with it, so those premiums are going to be higher than the ones that were coming off. So those things have jumped the auto premium. I think, my stuff I left back there, and my excitement to come up here, but I think that was maybe about $2,000.
$3,300.
Thirty-three, okay. So that's where some of it, and there's actually one more car than it was on last year to begin with. So not only did we replace some older ones with ones that were physical damage, but we actually have an additional vehicle on there that wasn't there last year.
And then the general liability was a 2,073.
The general liability, without going back and looking at the budget, there were some changes to your expenses and exposures and revenues and stuff, and so all those come into play when they generate the premium for the renewal each year. So, you know, it's like if you were having exposure on an area, and you grew the area, then the insurance exposure increases, so they're going to charge you accordingly. Just like if they're charging you on expenses, as those go up, so does your premium. So that's where those things have come into play with the budget, and again, we've had some claims that have occurred that, you know, definitely don't help anything, but at the same time, I don't think those are so much to come into play as much as the exposure increase.
Bring us up today a little bit on the inland marine situation?
What, such as...
The inland, what does that comprise?
What is it? Yeah, the inland marine exposure, like Terry said, it befuddles everybody on why they call it that. But basically, the way I explain it is, like with a property exposure, like this microphone, if it was here, it's covered here, it's on the property, but if it's on inland marine, that coverage follows it wherever it goes. So if I put it in my car, it's still covered, and if I take it to, you know, one of your houses, it's covered wherever it goes. But if I have it on a property, it's only, it's really technically only covered here, so it's your moving...
Wouldn't it probably be things like our back hose?
Yes, it's your moving equipment.
Mobile floating equipment.
Yes, but like some of like your police officer's equipment that's moving, and the police cars as well, is like some of the, like a lot of the park stuff, park equipment that is on inland marine. So my whole thing with that is, it's a moving, it follows wherever it goes. That's how I describe it.
Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, thanks.
No other questions, I'll entertain a motion to accept that bid. So move.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Kendall, to accept the property and liability insurance bid from Missouri Rural Services Property and Liability Renewal, with Tri-County being the broker. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
And the only other thing I have is the request for approval of the renewal for the crime policy. This should have been at your desk tonight, we didn't get it in time to get it in your packet, and this is simply the protection for those people who handle money within the city, and covers what we are required to cover within our ordinances of the city. And that renewal premium is $934. And I honestly did not look to see if there was an increase. Do you know if there was an increase? Sorry.
Getting your exercise, anyway.
Yes. No, no. Yes, there is an increase, but that was only because we have had a couple different positions that were added to the policy. So there was, I can't, I can't remember the exact ones, and I apologize, because I didn't bring that particular one with me, but it was just due, I think there was two, maybe three.
Municipal court clerk, possibly?
That is one of them.
Was an addition. Maybe as well as the recreation assistant?
That, yes, and I believe there was one additional one other than that, and it was, I think it increased from like the 750 area to the 9. I think it was like 750 before, and I apologize, I completely brought my stuff for the property and liability. I didn't look either, since it was such a small premium, but... So what exactly does that cover? I mean, you're saying it's an additional employees handling money? It's for employee theft. Like bonding them per se, kind of, sort of? Well, it's more for, like if, more for the sticky fingers. Okay. You know, I don't really know, and it also, it covers not only the cash, but like if they walked out with a computer or something like that. Okay.
My understanding is it's any kind of theft-related situation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Julie. Any other questions? Listen to the motion.
So move.
Second. Motion by Alderman Kendall, seconded by Alderman Tallo, to accept the crime insurance bid of $934 from Missouri Rural Services, Tri-County Agency, being the broker. Roll call, please.
Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Item eight is Chief Hottishell.
Good evening, mayor and board. The first thing I have tonight is the October report from the police department. Pretty much status quo, the bureau has been busy tracking down a lot of property crimes. We, again, are dealing with a rash of car break-ins. Last week, we got hit, actually, up in Wall and Hollow. Same problem, people are not locking their cars. So, please, lock your cars. Unfortunately, is a very easy target when the car doors are left unlocked, and they rifle through them and find whatever value they can find and get out. Anyway.
Chief, I got a question. When something is indicating it's unsolved, does that go into like a cold case thing that can come up later? People probably come forward?
Yeah, if we develop leads later on, somebody comes forward and has some information about it, we certainly do open those traps.
Thank you.
Anything else about the report?
Any other questions for the chief?
No.
Thank you.
Sure. All right, moving on to the other item, taking off the police hat and putting on the IT hat. We had a capital item to get Apple, actually, to get tablet computers for the board and the mayor. I sort of decided on iPads, not just because the city attorney thinks they're the best thing ever, but because I'm a little concerned about the ongoing litigation with the Android-based tablets, the Android OS as a, as a, so I think my recommendation is going to be for the iPads. And the reason that this looks so weird, and there's not actually Bit Tabs, is because it's virtually impossible to put Bit Tabs together for anything like this. So let me explain. iPads generally retail for about $4.99. Terry called me all excited last week, I think, and said, "Hey, Walmart has iPads on sale for $4.49." So we both zipped over to Walmart, and you see the printout there with the $4.49 on it, but they were sold out as quick as we clicked on to it. So what I'm looking for is approval from the board to purchase these as quickly as I can find them at some discounted rate. And what I think we're hoping for is that with the holidays coming, that we might see some discounts in the area of this $4.49, $4.50, and then we'll be able to add things like the covers and the screen protectors as well, which Terry found out unfortunately, it's pretty much a mandatory thing to have a cover for, because if they fall from any distance, they're completely trapped. So, anyway, as I said, this is kind of an unusual request. The budget for this is $3,500. I intend to keep it below that, and want to get it as far below that as I can, but because those numbers are such a moving target, it's almost impossible to come to you, you know, within a week, and so can we go ahead and do this? So I'm just looking for a little contingency on that.
The iPad will eliminate paper shuffle?
That is the idea, is to get rid of absolutely as much, I'm not going to say paper less, I'll say less paper.
Less paper.
Yeah. It won't get rid of all of it, but we're going to make a good stab at getting rid of as much of it as we can.
You go to Walmart at 10 o'clock Thursday night and stay in line?
I was going to say, no, it's at 8:00.
With respect.
8:00 PM?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'll be recovering from it later at 8:00.
Something.
Ms. Thorne, can you share, I don't know if you have the numbers, but when this was originally budgeted, there was discussion on not only the paper that it would save, but a study was done as to the cost savings to the city of going to this. Do you still have those?
I do. I do. Um, at the time that we were working on this year's capital budget, Melody had, um, done some time study-related information to come up with what amount of time was being spent by herself and other staff, including the Police Department for delivery of packets. And the total of costs, that would include the staff time for, to prepare the paper packets that you all now receive, along with the Police Department's time to deliver those packets. And the cost of the copies and supplies is just over sixty-nine hundred dollars a year. So, certainly not a hundred percent of that would be eliminated, but a good majority of that would be eliminated if you deliver your packets to your iPad as opposed to paper packet delivery.
And I, I was aware of that, but people in the, in the crowd weren't present, people that will be watching this, uh, I think it's important, uh, for them to be aware that this isn't a situation where we're purchasing gadgets and toys without a, a true purpose. So, thank you.
Does thirty-five hundred include training on how to operate? I'm totally illiterate.
That, yes, I, I'll provide that. I think we're gonna make that as, uh, as easy as possible for, you know, delivery of the, the packets right to your machine, which would be pretty easy.
I'm just glad that Greg is in foray staffel, just bought it for every year.
I haven't, I haven't embraced it.
He realizes the superiority of the.
Mayor, couldn't Cheryl coach you on that?
Uh, I'm not sure about that.
Which he, we pay her.
Drink is good.
Describe that, describe.
So, you're asking for, uh, Board approval for you to, uh, move forward on purchasing your, your iPad? So, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Kendall to authorize Chief Hottishell to, uh, uh, purchase the iPads in the amount of thirty-five hundred dollars. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Towel?
Yes.
Any other, Chief? Good. Item nine is Planning, Zoning Director, Jack Ham.
Good evening, Mayor and Boards. I have before you is a proposed lease agreement, to approve a lease agreement between the City of Warrenton and the St. Charles Amateur Radio Club to allow the continued use of the two existing St. Charles Amateur Radio Club's antennas on the city's Ashland Avenue Water Tower. And it's to only be used for the exclusive purpose of non-commercial amateur radio for the weather spotters. And they have turned in their application and plans. I reviewed and approved the plans, and so has Guy Givers, the Director of Public Works. And they've paid their filing fee and the hundred dollar yearly lease amount already.
Are, are those towers on, are those antennas on the tower now?
Yes, they, these particular antennas have been on there for years.
For years? And, and nobody knew they were there? Or, are we, were concerned with them?
I, I believe we were just trying to get an inventory of everything that's on our towers to date. We went out earlier this year and inventoried everything, and we're just trying to make a clean lease agreement, so we have, uh, control over who's there. They gave me a contact list, so there's only a specific list of individuals that'd be available in that area.
So, we need a motion to approve that lease agreement?
Uh, no.
No? Because we got, we got that coming up on a bill.
Yeah, just if you guys have any discussions.
Okay.
Or questions about it.
Any other questions or concerns about this one? Anybody on this side? Item nine B.
The second one is, uh, the same thing, a lease agreement, but the, this one is between the city and the Warren County R-three school district to allow the continued use of one antenna on the city's Ashland Avenue Water Tower. And they, they have paid their filing fee and yearly lease agreement. And Guy and I both have reviewed their plans and approved them.
Do you know what, what that antenna does, or?
They use this one for, uh, communication, I believe mainly for the school buses.
School buses, that's what I was thinking, so. Probably very necessary. Any questions or concerns?
Yes.
Okay, how about nine C?
Uh, this one is with the, uh, lease agreement with the Warren County R-three school district to place an antenna on the Warrior Avenue Water Tower. Currently, there's no antenna on there. They're trying to increase their coverage area, is why they're requesting to be allowed to put an antenna on that particular tower. And both their filing fee and, uh, lease agreements have been paid, and Guy and I both have reviewed and approved their plan.
Any questions? That's fine. Anything else, Jack?
That's it, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item ten, Michelle Slunter, Economic Development Director.
Good evening, what I have for you tonight is a request to, to approve a change order for the lights on Highway forty-seven. Ryanhold Electric has sent us information for that. There's going to be a light that will be, um, in the parking lot at Hill Real Estate. Uh, it's still on modots right of way there, there, but because it's in the parking lot, they would like to put two ballards to protect the light, so if someone pulls in, they don't pull in and hit our brand-new light that we put in there. So, the change order is for two ballards to protect that light.
Okay, where is that at? Where's exactly, that exact location?
That is like right on the corner of forty-seven and Feathers in, um, Hiller, uh, sorry, um, Hillas parking lot, and they're gonna put the ballards on each side of it to protect it, but it is still in modots right of way.
Those are expensive. Six hundred dollars each? Bill and I could stick a couple poles in the ground, shoot right at Goodman, hold this post or something.
They'd take the ones down there by the show harvests.
No.
I'm into repurposing.
Yeah. It's expensive, it's probably a lot less than if you had to replace that light, so unfortunately. So, I make a motion that we go along with the change order, a total of twelve hundred dollars for two, uh, when we thought tackery.
Ballards?
Ballards. Pipe ballards.
Second.
Uh, motion made by Alderman Towel, seconded by Alderman Flake to approve the Ryanhold Electric bid for two pipe ballards in the amount of twelve hundred dollars. Roll call, please.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Towel?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Anything else?
That's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Item eleven, uh, Building Commissioner, Jim Daley.
Good evening all. Uh, first you have your monthly report for your permits. Pretty quiet there, anything significant is the, uh, commercial remodel of the Burger King, which we've probably all seen taking place, so it's just, it's, uh, pretty much completed now. Uh, the other thing is, uh, we did start that single-family residence in Fields of Dreams for Canon, so we've got another house number five underway for the year.
Number five.
And then, uh, also have your property maintenance report, and most of that thrown along, um, if there's any questions, that's all I have.
The Burger King, they work seven days a week on there, or?
They did.
They did it at the beginning, uh, anyway. Any questions for?
Good weather.
Yes, it is.
Right time.
Mr. Daley? Anything else, Jim?
No, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item number twelve is the Maintenance and Grounds Director, Brad Boosie-Cruze.
Good evening, Gordon Mayor. Uh, have your work order, or the monthly report, uh, for October, November. Uh, not a whole lot of change, uh, yet, uh, still cutting a lot of grass and, uh, grinding leaves and a few other repairs and what have you.
Have you, have you, uh, moved into the new building?
Yes, we are. We are, we're in it, and we're, um, when we get, when we have time, we're kinda getting everything situated, so everybody's kinda finding their place and trying to find all our equipment back, so, but yeah, we are, we are moved in and love, loving every minute of it.
It's gonna work out very well.
Very, very well. We appreciate what you, what you did, the guys that are around us. We like that this first year we're gonna have heat, so we're, we're all part of that.
They're all happy.
Yes, we are, so.
That's good.
Any questions for Brad on the monthly report? Anything else on that report?
Uh, no, that's all I have on that. Uh, next is the approval to sell the holiday wreaths, our old wreaths. Uh, we were thinking it might be a good time to put those on gov deals and see if any other, uh, community would, uh, would want them, or village or whatever. So, since we have all our new wreaths up, we're gonna need room to, uh, put the, uh, new ones back in, so we have all the old ones, uh, left, so just, uh, need your old's approval to sell them, and we'll get them on gov deals tomorrow.
How do you, how do you go about selling them?
Uh, we, uh, we've already taken pictures, uh, Randy has everything, uh, ready to go. We'll just put it on gov deals, they put a picture of it and where we're at and a certain amount of time, and that's how, how we sell them.
Is that highest bidder?
Yes. Yeah, we give them two weeks or whatever to, to do it, and they can bid on them, and we've sold a lot of police cars and mowers and everything else on them. Amazing where people come from to buy them.
Uh, we need a motion on that? Entertain a motion to authorize the, uh, Building Department to sell thirty-five holiday wreaths.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Dryer to, uh, sell the thirty-five holiday wreaths on the, uh, uh, what do you call it?
Gov, gov deals.
Gov deals.
Yep.
Uh, all of the favors, say aye?
Aye.
Pose likewise? Motion carried six to zero.
Next thing I have, I, I'm up here.
What do you want first?
Uh, we're getting serious now.
I agree. Guess we're gonna do the, the map first. iPads are good, I, I do those nice. They do work nice.
Emerald ashbore, that's what we're gonna talk about?
Yes, it is. Um, I attended a conference, uh, or seminar about mid-October down at Powder Valley that the, uh, the Conservation Department, uh, put on. I kinda heard a little bit about it, thought it probably something we need to look into with the ash trees. Uh, I, I think in your package you have, you had a, a handout, kinda just, uh, some frequently asked, uh, questions about, like, what is, uh, the Emerald Ashbore? And it's, it's an exotic invasive wood-boring insect that infects, infests, kills, and kills American ash trees. And that's both in the forest and landscape, so that's in-town, out-of-town, it doesn't make any difference where it is, they will kill it, and it's, it's not a question of will it? It, it, they say they will be gone, so. The, um, I have a video here in just a minute and kinda gives you an idea of what it loo, looks like. The, uh, the Emerald, Emerald Ashbore came from Russia, is in Russia, northern China, Japan, and Korea. It was first discovered in, in the southwest Michigan in two thousand and two, and, uh, the, uh, it like, most likely, they think, came over on a cargo ship from, in, into the port there in the Detroit areas where they, like, kinda first found it at, and from there on, it's, uh, I'll kinda, can you bring the map up?
Please.
Oh, I'm sorry. A little, yeah. Uh, it was first spotted up in, oop.
Like doing the weather.
Spotted in this area, and you can see where it is all, every red dot is a, is a sighting or had they have them. If you see here in Illinois, it's quarantined off at our, uh, border. The, uh, the, uh, Missouri had its first case in two thousand and eight, and that was down in Wayne County, and that, uh, they think that it was in the, uh, Wallapelo, I think, recreation area, and they're thinking it came in with wood that was transferred in. So, I don't know if y'all seen the big billboards, "Do not move your firewood," that's what you're talking about. So, in, uh, the, I guess the video, if you pop that up, got a short video here you can look at.
The Emerald Ashbore is a non-native wood-boring beetle that's killing our ash trees. It's a small beetle, about a half-inch long, metallic green, that has come here from Asia. It, uh, came into the U.S. several years ago, and estimates are that it has killed upwards to fifty million ash trees in the Midwest. This beetle is capable of killing ash and all species of ash trees. It has the potential to remove all ash trees from North America if it continues its spread, which we're expecting. Think about the chestnut light, which removed the American chestnut from our forests, and Dutch elm disease, which has removed huge numbers of elm trees. The Emerald Ashbore has the potential to do that same kind of thing with our ash trees.
The, uh, the city has, uh, thirteen ash trees in our, in, uh, inventory, uh, as of now, we're now, we're still, the second half of our inventory is, is coming up. We have nine of them in, in the cemetery and four of them at Morgan Park. Uh, this, uh, we don't, we're, we're kinda fortunate that our trees, our trees are not on what they call street trees. There's a lot, a lot of communities around that ash trees is what they planted on the streets, nice shade, big cover, really nice. Chesterfield has eight thousand one hundred and sixty-seven street trees of ash. Their estimated cost, which they have already started now, taking everyone down, is five hundred dollars a tree, that's over four mi, million dollars they're spending, and they, they've already started. They've got a crew, that, that's all, all they do. Every, uh, every day they go out, they're cutting ash trees down, they're getting a lot of calls, "Hey, the tree was fine, what, what are you taking it down for?" The problem with the ashbore, you won't notice it for five, five years. They found out that it will go in, bore, go undetected for five years, when you find it, it's already too late. The way they, uh, they're, they've kinda got a, they've got a graph that comes out, five years you don't notice that your trees are fine, you might see a little, uh, yellowing starting, some of the tops might start to decay a little bit. Well, at that fifth year, at the sixth year, is when they're dead, and then all of them start dying, they'll just go, they'll just go down in a row. The problem with the, with the ash trees, when they, when they get the Emerald Ashbore, they become very brittle, and, and that's the reason why the street trees are having problems with them, because of the, uh, the, the city owns them. What's happening, limbs fall off, fall on cars, and it, they do it without, what, warning, they could just be sitting there, sunny day, next thing you know, limb's on top of a car. We, we do have, send some of the older subdivisions, uh, the street trees over on First, Second, and Third Street, and over in the, in that area, that, uh, a lot of those were, um, they have those in, in their front yards and along the streets, but basically they're in the, in the people's yards. Those are the ones I've been kinda keeping an eye on, and that's where, something we really gotta, uh, watch. The, um, what the, uh, Conservation Department is, is wanting the cities to do is to, uh, have an ordinance in the planning and zoning, not to allow any ash trees, uh, in any of their, uh, I guess their planning, zoning site plans for now, because if they, uh, it's gonna come down to where every ash tree will probably wind up being cut down. And the, the only way to get rid of it is chip it within a half, a half-inch, uh, small or burn. So, and then they have to be taken to a special site that's to can monitor them, just to keep them from spreading, so. That's something, I don't think we're gonna be in that quite a severe thing, 'cause like I say, we're more of a rural community, but yet we do have, still have some of these in, in town, and, but that's where they're wanting this, uh, planning and zoning. So, I mean, that's something that we need to look at, or planning and zoning needs to look, look at. look at. And the other thing was, they recommend now is to not go in and plant just one species of tree in any subdivision, any site plan, any commercial business, like you see a lot of them go in, they'll plant Bradford pears, the whole thing. They don't want you, they don't want us to do that anymore. They want, they would like to see a variety of at least two, possibly more varieties of trees in these, on these site plans. And the reason for that is, just for this, if something, a species comes in and gets wiped out, instead of all of them, you're gonna have some, you know, you're gonna have a few of them left. And the Bradford pear is not one of them that they want. They're trying to get that one outlawed, too, for the same problem. They get so big, windstorm comes up, they get brash, they just fall apart. So we're gonna, that was, that was one of the trees that everybody was really pushing. Now they're finding out, once it gets bigger, we got problems with them, and a lot more problems than what's worked. Let's see, I think that was, I think that was about all, just kind of a, kind of an update on it and what to look forward to, but it's not a good scenario, but I'm thinking if we get a little proactive on it and kinda keep an eye out on the trees, we can do something, but the push with the planning and zoning is their big thing right now.
There's no treatment or insecticide?
There is. It costs about $86 a tree. It's good for one here. It's a chemical, they inject to the base of the tree a couple times, and then each year you have to go back and reinject it, and that's not a given thing. But the websites, the EBA, or EABMissouri.edu, or if you just Google the Emerald Ash Bore in Missouri, all kinds of websites that pop up. You know, a lot of time now, people are out cutting wood, if they happen to see it, get it reported. Like I say, Wayne County, and then now they've found it in Platt County in Kansas City, and they've quarantined off a couple areas up there, and I think it was Crawford and, or not Crawford, Clay and Carter, or Madison, Platt, and Reynolds have had sightings in it. Carter, Clay, Iron, Madison, Platt, Reynolds, and Shannon and Wayne Counties are currently under state quarantine. And what that means, there's no forest products of anything goes in or out of it. The other thing to look at is the firewood at the gas stations. Make sure, if you all buy it, make sure it's hardwood, like oak or something, not ash, because a lot of that is transported in, but the USDA usually does a pretty good job on getting that, 'cause they have to be a licensed dealer to come into the state, so. But that's just kinda where we're at, and I don't know what our next step is. I guess you all would have to make a decision if you all wanted to go along with their, with the Conservation Department's recommendation of changing our site plans to not include ash, or the Bradford pears, or if that's something planning and zoning needs to look at.
So there's no cure in sight for these?
No. No, they said there's a wasp that does some of it, but they said it's not a cure thing, because a lot of places this wasp doesn't live, and they're trying to introduce it, but it's not, it's not going over very well. And the biggest thing was, and I didn't think about it, all the bats, Major League Baseball bats are made out of ash, so they're in a big panic to buy a bunch of the wood and stuff, so. But it's gonna be costly, and you know, it's just amazing the amount of, I mean, it's like they have $4 million in Chesterfield just to cut down trees. I mean, that's, you know, just.
Something to think about.
This has been oncoming for like a year, hasn't it been?
It's been on since 2002.
But you came to.
Yes, I came to about a year ago. I was playing about a year ago when I first got introduced to it, and now they're having more and more of these talks, and, 'cause they know if it's in Kansas City and it's across the border and it's in there, we like, and I don't know if y'all noticed the big purple traps up in, or the big boxes hanging way up in the trees, if you go down any country roads, those are what those are. Those are the Emerald Ash Bore traps. They have the pheromone in them that's supposed to get them in, catch them, and then they see, but it's just one of those things. But you know, they say with the interstate running through, they're almost positive that we have them, they just said we haven't found them yet. And the problem's gonna be, when we do find them, it's gonna be, it's gonna be bad. So, something to look at.
You do see ash trees die in certain areas.
Yep. Yep. And that's, that's the sad part, though, 'cause you don't know, like this year, if it was the drought, or the, could be this, so I mean, we just gotta kinda keep an eye on them next spring when they start coming out and start looking. So, thank you, Brad. Thank you.
I don't know. I think if the Conservation Commission is recommending that we take some form of action, I think we should start checking, we're working on it at least.
Yeah. We could recommend that to Jack, or who would, we saw a tree in there and work on it, or what?
We could recommend that to our councilor to have PNC look into the tree epidemic. You mind doing that?
Yep. Work with Jack.
Jack. I think it's a wise decision. Someday, the ash trees might be extinct. There may not be ash trees if we keep going in this.
That's kinda what they're saying. That's kinda worst-case scenario, but that's the way it's headed.
Is that all, Brad?
That's all I have for you tonight. Thank you.
We've got some bills to convert to ordinances, and I, the first bill is Bill number 57-12.
Call for the first reading of Bill number 57-12.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Tallo, seconded by Alderman Kendall for first reading of Bill number 57-12.
An ordinance to authorize the mayor to sign a lease agreement between St. Charles Amateur Radio Club and the city of Warren, Missouri to place antennas on the city's water tower located on Ashland Avenue.
Call for second and final reading and passage of Bill number 57-12.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Dryer for second reading and passage of Bill number 57-12.
An ordinance to authorize the mayor to sign a lease agreement between St. Charles Amateur Radio Club and the city of Warren, Missouri to place antennas on the city's water tower located on Ashland Avenue.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero. Next bill is Bill number 58-12.
Call for the first reading of Bill number 58-12.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Tallo, seconded by Alderman Kendall for first reading of Bill number 58-12.
An ordinance to authorize the mayor to sign a lease agreement between Warren County R3 School District and the city of Warren, Missouri to place one antenna on the city's water tower located on Ashland Avenue.
Call for second, final reading and passage of Bill number 58-12.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Dryer for second and final reading and passage of Bill number 58-12.
An ordinance to authorize the mayor to sign a lease agreement between Warren County R3 School District and the city of Warren, Missouri to place one antenna on the city's water tower located on Ashland Avenue.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero. Bill number 59-12.
Call for the first reading of Bill number 59-12.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Tallo, seconded by Alderman Clark for first reading of Bill number 59-12.
An ordinance to authorize the mayor to sign a lease agreement between Warren County R3 School District and the city of Warren, Missouri to place one antenna on the city's water tower located on Warrior Avenue.
Call for second, final reading and passage of Bill number 59-12.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Dryer for second and final reading and passage of Bill number 59-12.
An ordinance to authorize the mayor to sign a lease agreement between Warren County R3 School District and the city of Warren, Missouri to place one antenna on the city's water tower located on Warrior Avenue.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero. At this time, unless there's one here, something else to bring forward, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Tallo, seconded by Alderman Clark to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise. We're adjourned.